Good evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our co-sponsors, welcome to this forum for candidates for Eatonville School District Position Four and the At Large position. Thank you to the candidates and to the audience for taking time to participate in this forum. I am Liz Knox, co-moderator from the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County. And moderating with me tonight is Bailey Wamboldt, a recent graduate from the University of Washington Tacoma. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 102 years has been to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government. We conduct candidate forums to provide voters with information on which to base their votes. League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish people surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. This forum is for the primary election, which is August 1st. Forums for this election are held only for races in which there are three or more candidates. When the league holds a forum, all candidates are invited.
At this forum and off political order are Karen Carr for Position Four and Kim Williams for the At Large position. Cory Ackerman was unable to be with us this evening. Ground rules have been sent in advance to the candidates. Candidates, do you each agree to follow the ground rules, including agreeing to those regarding any reporting of this forum and to speak only to the issues, not about each other? Please indicate your agreement to all ground rules with a thumbs up. Thank you. Questions for tonight will be 60 seconds in length. Our timekeeper is Terri Baker. She will hold up cards when you have 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see the timekeeper and the moderators. Also, please meet yourself when it is not your turn to speak. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. These will be given in alphabetical order. After that, the order of answering questions will rotate. Each candidate will get the same amount of time to answer in every case. At the end, closing statements may be up to one minute and will be given in reverse order of the opening statements. If you have a question for these candidates, please text the question to 253-948-6029. Depending on the number of questions submitted, we may not be able to get to them all. The order of opening two-minute statements again in alphabetical is again in alphabetical order, so we will start with Karen Carr.
Hi. I'm Karen Carr. I am an Eatonville resident. I've been a resident for 15 years. I've put four kids through the school district. I've taught in this school district for eight years. As a parent educator, I did media specialist. So I taught library, technology, and STEM for K through eight. I've taught at all of the schools except for the high school. So I've been at four schools in our district. I've been a member of the community. I've been a member of a local church in town for, oh goodness, over 20 years before I actually lived here. That's where I met my husband. Anyways, I am excited to run, hopefully gain votes, to win. And I just, I feel that I can make a huge difference in what is going on with our school because I feel like I have hands-on experience and I know the needs of our children. I've seen what's happening firsthand with our kids in the district as well as with my own child who is a student in the district. I just wanted to jump in and get hands-on and I felt like I would be a better advocate for the students on the school board. I felt that I was no longer making as big of a difference as I needed to or wanted to as a district employee. So I actually quit my job within the district to apply for a seat on the school board and to be able to run. So thank you and I appreciate your guys' invite and my opportunity to be here.
Thank you very much. Now, Kim Williams.
Hello. My name is Kim Williams and I am also a resident of Eatonville. I am somewhat new in that I moved here recently, but my family has been here for at least four generations. My great aunt founded the Pioneer Farm Museum and I have many family members that have gone through the Eatonville School District. I was a former teacher for six years, a public education teacher, and I also taught in K through 12. So I was a high school teacher by trade, English teacher, but I also worked in the middle school and elementary schools in Nevada, in Virginia. And then I went back to school and got my master's in film and media. And now I taught at the college level as an adjunct professor for several years, seven plus years. So have a lot of experience as an educator. I have been coming to Eatonville since I was very little and so I know the people and the place well. And now that I live here, I have two kids in the district, one in Eatonville and one at Columbia Crest. And I just felt called to also throw my hat into the ring and see how I could put my expertise to use here. There were some issues that popped up as soon as we moved here that I thought was really interesting and scary. And so I wanted to see if there's something to do with my expertise here with those issues.
No, thank you. Thank you so much.
Hi. So as far as the things that the district has done well over the last five years, I would say going back to about five years ago, I was very pleased with the district. It was my happy place. I loved being a part of it. We were, we were, things were just changing and we were doing great things in Eatonville. I had even hosted our mayor and, or his wife. He did visit our school, but I hosted his wife for lunch in my library, you know, because we were a STEM school. Every school in our district had become STEM. We had also been endorsed as green schools. We had been starting gardens. We had been starting food programs for kids and sharing food. We were just, we were fast forward into being a very special community, a very special school district that was, had, you know, we had different things to offer than the average or other schools around. So we were being visited by other districts for what we were doing. I was personally involved with, you know, requesting and writing for some of the grants and, you know, it was just, it was a great space. The town was very involved. We had families involved. We had
Excuse me, that's time.
involvement where
Ms. Carr, that's time.
what was happening.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, our next question, we'll start with Karen. And the question is, what are the biggest budgetary needs you see in the near future in the school district and how will you address those needs?
Tough question to answer as far as how will I address the needs of the budget as far as, you know, it will be a group talked about effort and we will figure that out as a board. As far as the budget needs, we definitely need to address, the biggest ones I see is budget for parent educators and bus drivers and having the, you know, enough employees to get our kids to and from school. And the biggest ones is the lack of pay for parents and bus drivers.
So yes, the biggest budgetary needs that I've been hearing about are busing, you know, making sure the kids are able to get to school. And then support for the teachers and the educators and all of the staff and, you know, faculty that need to get paid for the work that they're doing, plus bringing on the right amount of support and staff to help the youth and the students that need that support. And then, sorry, the sign just came up. And then mental health support, you know, getting more youth, the help they need for around the issues that we're dealing with in our culture that are, you know, rapidly increasing. So that's it.
For our next question, we'll be starting with Kim Williams. The next question is, how would you help to create a climate in our schools to lessen the incidence of bullying? And what steps would you take to ensure the school district addresses this issue?
Yeah, this is a tough subject. The work that I do and I, that I, the work that I've done for the nonprofit that I work for, we work a lot around empowering youth through social emotional learning, which is a hot topic. This is a word, a phrase that people are, you know, Larry of, I guess, but we need to build empathy in our youth. We need to help youth, you know, understand each other better. And I think there are programs, there are activities, there is way to build culture and support in our schools. I've seen it firsthand, restorative justice, circle building, and, you know, giving the youth the opportunity to find ways to help support each other. So we need, there's a lot of work there and there's a lot of ways to do the work. We just have to be willing to do it.
Thank you. Next, Karen Carr.
I, as far as lessening the incidence of bullying, I definitely think that there needs to be a hands-on approach with training, with possible classes, bringing in outside resources into our district, not just assemblies. I feel that there needs to be consequences for behavior. I feel that if it's outside counseling that's needed for students that have a repeated offense of bullying or severe bullying, that they definitely need addressed to protect the students that are being bullied. I have seen firsthand extreme bullying. I've seen where I have, I've had, you know, a child in my classroom not wanting to live anymore because he was severely bullied. I've seen him move to a different area and flourish and not deal with that. We just, we definitely hands-on. It can't be overlooked. It cannot be something that the board is not paying attention to or they don't think is a big deal because it's a huge deal.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you. And we start with you for our next question. Has been an increase in challenges to materials in public school libraries and classrooms in various places? What is your position on censorship?
Okay.
And how should challenges to library and curriculum materials be handled? And Karen, go ahead, please.
First off, I, oh, thank you. First off, I feel just knowing what's in your library. I feel that the board should know what's in there so there's no surprises when there's a confrontation or a parent coming to ask questions. They should, they should know the materials and the curriculum at hand. We should definitely be involved in that. As far as censorship, I don't agree with extreme censorship. As a librarian, I definitely monitored what my students checked out per request by parents. So if there was a parent with a belief and they came to me and they said they did not want their child reading something, I supported that. I supported the parent. You know, and so I, I watched what the kid, you know, and it never was an issue, you know? I mean, as far as that goes, it's not like a kid I came and wanted to check out something that the parent, you know, didn't agree with. I just feel that there needs to be a relationship with parents, with the board, with everybody to just know, but I do not agree with actually censoring the library and removal of books.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, I trust our librarians and teachers inherently to provide our libraries and our classrooms with the materials that reflect the school districts that our students are in. And whenever book banning or censorship is part of a community, you know, it can devolve into so much more. So, you know, our country is built upon freedom of speech and it's hard for us to justify banning things when, when we're supposed to be about having access. So just like sex education, if the kids' parents want to opt out, maybe that is a way to address this issue with the school district, the school district Eatonville and the board being a part of making that an opportunity. But once we ban books, then, you know, it, it devolves. So our society devolves. We need to make sure we keep our liberties in place.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. And for this next question, we'll be starting with Kim Williams again. Given that Eatonville is a small district, how will you provide adequate educational services for the full range of students, including both struggling learners and those who are high achieving?
Froze, the first part, when you repeated the question, it froze, so I didn't hear it again.
Oh, no, sorry. Given that Eatonville is a small district, how will you provide adequate educational services for the full range of students, including both struggling learners and those who are high achieving?
Well, you know, it's part of what we guarantee is, you know, Washington state law has said that all students need to have access to a quality education and all types of learners. And so it's up to the district to make sure that that is correct and possible. Making sure that that is what happens here in Eatonville. I, you know, the community has concerns around transparency and having a say in how that is done. So making sure that all students have access and the ability to have a quality public education that meets their needs will be very important to, you know, try to attain or achieve. So talking with people about how to do that, the parents, the teachers, and the school board together and the administration is going to be what the kind of problem solving that we're going to have to do.
Thank you. Now Karen Carr's turn.
Thank you. I'm right there. I think it all starts with the administration and school board and then counselors as far as, you know, having transparency and being able to talk with parents, getting to know the children and providing the tools for the teachers that need it. If there's, you know, being involved as far as, you know, setting up IHPs or 504 plans or meeting the students where they're at or if they're high achieving, making sure that we are meeting everything and listening to the parents, being available for them when the parents come into the school, making sure that, or coming to board meetings, whatnot, making sure that the parents don't feel blown off, that they're being heard, that their kids are getting the needs met, that they are, you know, feeling that maybe there's a lack of. And being willing to humble themselves and, and address what is at hand, give them the, the education that they need. And yeah, and just being there, Karen, for the kids.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. And we're going to start with you for the next question. The next question is this. Data from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction shows that there is a gap in readiness in the six areas assessed for kindergarteners entering Eatonville schools. Seventy-two percent of girls demonstrate school readiness for kindergarten while 57 percent of boys demonstrate school readiness. What would you propose to improve readiness for students entering kindergarten? And Karen, we'll start with you.
I mean, I think that would go to, thank you. I think that would go to having the programs available for Head Start or preschool, which Eatonville has attempted to do. I mean, we've, we've started preschool programs in our district. I would say since about 2018, maybe it was 19, when we really got on board with having preschool available and having low-income preschool available for parents.
Thirty seconds.
So, you know, they, I believe there's still, the program is still going. So that, that is a huge thing and I think with everything, it probably takes four or five years to catch up and we have COVID in there. So we really need to be focusing on those preschool programs to ready the kids. Also, I'm a firm believer that kids are ready at different ages. I mean, I've talked to many doctors and, you know, school teachers, everybody dealing with my own kids that, you know, there's just, there's a time when stuff starts to click and I'm not sure if there is a difference between girls and boys on that. I would be interested in finding out the stats.
Your time is out now. Thank you. And now we'll go to Kim Williams, the same question.
Can you repeat? Coming from a district where my children went before Eatonville's little school district, they both had access to preschool three and pre-K four. And so they started school at three years old and benefited greatly from having been in school for two years prior to kindergarten. So I know for a fact that programs like Head Start and preschool work and it would, you know, greatly benefit the students of Eatonville if that were available. My understanding, there is a preschool program here and so it's probably helping some, but access and getting students to that program and it being affordable is a big hurdle if it's not free. And then of course, you know, if it's Head Start and it is affordable or free, then being able to get the youth that are supposed to be there, there is going to be an issue because of the demographics and geography of the area. So we really should build those up as much as possible because they do help.
Thank you. Thank you. And again, Kim Williams, you'll start with this next question. What will you do to help with a successful transition to the new superintendent?
Well, I sat in on the superintendent search meeting because I was curious to see who the candidates were and what Eatonville School District was looking for as a new superintendent without knowing any background or what was happening. So I was very pleased to see that they chose the person that I thought would be the best candidate of the four that were interviewed. And so I'm excited to, you know, get, have the possibility or a chance to work with somebody who is coming from a district that is so much larger, that has been dealing with a lot of the issues that are trickling down into Eatonville. And so I think has the experience needed to take some of these harder topics head-on. And so welcoming him will not be a difficult challenge because I think it's an exciting time for Eatonville School District and I think the new superintendent is going to do a fabulous job. I'm looking forward to seeing how it goes and being a part of it if I can.
Thank you so much. Next, we care, Karen Carr.
Yeah. I, I plan on welcoming, welcoming him and, you know, I've met with Jay and had a, you know, short conversation with him and he seemed like a really, really nice guy. I think that his background with psychology and everything, like he needs, he knows how to slow down. He knows how to take the time and hear people. I think that his, overall his attitude as far as, I think he's going to have that welcoming attitude, that, that personality that I feel that parents and stakeholders are going to feel like they're heard when they are talking to him. So I think that's a huge thing that he, he just has a down-to-earth personality from what I can see. I have never heard a negative thing about him. I have a sister that teaches in the Bethel School District. She, you know, says a bunch of great things about him. You know, I've just heard lots of encouraging things that they think that he's going to be a good fit for our district. So without having a further
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this relates a little bit to the, the comment that I heard about racism in the district. So how would you approach racism in the school district? And how would you approach curriculum adoption to ensure that it includes accurate information about racism in American history?
So as far as racism in the school district, I, I didn't see a lot of that, you know, when I was up at Columbia Crest. I didn't see a lot of that at Warehouser. I didn't see it at the elementary school level. And honestly, my years in the district at the middle school for COVID years, so I didn't see it firsthand there. I do believe that we have some great programs, but teaching kindness, teaching that everybody's the same, you know, and then teaching, you know, I mean, we do have some great history lessons and I, I feel like, you know, yeah, definitely just having the awareness of what people have gone through in the past and, you know, just being, you know, just, your classroom has to be hands-on as far as having, have, you know, your, your school has to support and have hands-on as far as having the curriculum that teaches, you know, that our, our history. So I think that, you know, we, we have a pretty good start on that and I didn't experience racism.
Thank you. This is, you know, a tough, tough topic, obviously. The issue of racism in the district, I think, is not exactly, I think people aren't exactly aware how pervasive it might be. My cousins who went through the district in the 90s said that it was an issue back then, so I don't think it's gone away. We moved here halfway through the year and my friend's child told me that the N-word was being used in the middle school hallways this year. And that terrifies me. So how do we address this issue where we have young people in this district learn to respect each other regardless of race, you know, and all of the other things that define, the demographics that define our youth? So we need to find ways to combat it. Adopting textbooks that have accurate information is very important. And so making sure that the school board does a good job of that will be utmost importance to me when we, when and if I am elected to the school board.
Thank you. And Kim, we'll start with you for this next question. How will you encourage civic education, student engagement in government, and voter registration for high school students?
Well, when I had government in high school, I loved my teacher so much, he made us memorize the preamble and it got us excited about, and we had to read newspaper clips and got us excited about the news because it was relevant to current events and history. And so I think it's really important that, especially with these past four years of, you know, explaining how civics works, how democracy works, how voting matters, and getting students excited about that process is a challenge, but also important to do. And because I was excited about it from my teacher when I was in school, I believe that it's possible to share that excitement with young people in a district like this. So I'm hoping to be able to have the opportunity to do so.
Thank you very much. Now Karen Carr.
I think that high school students should definitely have government and civics classes. I took a law class in high school that I thought was a lot of fun, just to put, put you out there and get you into current events. I think that we should, you know, for the seniors that are, you know, getting ready to turn 18, I think, you know, there, there should be a voter's registration, teaching them how to vote, you know, register. I don't, I don't think there'd be anything wrong with that, having, you know, a time in school where they can register to vote and get their, you know, ID cards and everything set up by the, you know, for when they are 18. You know, because I know you can do it online. It's easy peasy. You go online, it takes like five minutes and you're registered to vote. So I think the school should definitely be hands-on in teaching that, the same as, you know, teach them how to write a check, you know, or basic home economics. That's, that's part of living. So I, I think we can, we can definitely foster and encourage and make it a fun event. So I, I think we can, we can definitely foster, encourage and make it a fun event to um get them all registered to vote or show them how to do it by the time they're eighteen.
Thank you, Karen. And Karen, you will start with this next question. How do you envision helping the most vulnerable students achieve success and graduate? Especially those who are homeless, migrants, live in foster care or have disabilities? What programs and supports should we have to help them succeed?
Well, that's a, that's a huge question. Um, because right now I, you know, can say that I, I necessarily don't agree with um what happens with kids with the um extra need in high school. I uh feel that they are pushed out. I feel that they are encouraged to go to um Washington Online Academy or some other homeschool program that is not involved with the school to keep our numbers up and uh our graduation rate up. Uh, I, I don't feel that those students are being met where they need to be met. I, I feel like once the district sees that they are uh going to be a challenge and uh on the road to not uh graduating, that they encourage the kids to do, do some other program that's not within the district. And I've seen that firsthand with my own eyes. So um, I, I don't, I, I want that to change. So that, that's a big deal to me, to, to meet the students and uh try to lift them up and get them on the route of graduating. I have seen teachers be involved with kids and uh we need more of those teachers to be hands-on to get them to do summer school or school over spring break or what.
Excellent. Uh, and Kim, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please.
Absolutely. How do you envision helping the most vulnerable students achieve success and graduate? Especially those who are homeless, migrants, live in foster care or have disabilities? What programs and supports should we have to help them succeed?
Well, um, you know, within any community that has a lot of different uh, you, you know, people who are willing to support the disenfranchised and young people who are struggling that need more support and help. Um, you know, there are nonprofits that are stepping up to do those kinds of things. I hear that is prevalent in this district. Um, but also, you know, because Eatonville School District and Eatonville itself is, has this community, you know, small community type scenario. Um, it doesn't make any sense why any young people should fall through the cracks. And we must put programs in place to help those that need it the most. Um, so in addition to nonprofits that are doing the work already, um, you know, finding ways to bring these youth back in, whether it's through, you know, programs like um, oh my gosh, it just gives me the one that's out uh here in the valley that help you, young people learn about, you know, forestation and um growing food and things like that. So I don't know, there's a lot of different ways that we could go about.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And now it's time for closing statements. Candidate has up to one minute for a closing statement. We will reverse the order of the opening statements. And so we will begin with Kim Williams. Kim, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. I've enjoyed this process. It's uh definitely a good way to think about all the important issues that are, that Eatonville School District has to deal with. Um, I think that I bring expertise and an outside experience and perspective that would be helpful to the Eatonville School Board. But also um being from the area through family and having been here for many generations, I understand a, a lot what is needed. And I think that um I have the, I have what it takes to help bring those issues to the forefront and help solve them. When I still have thirty seconds. So I hope that people will give me a chance. I really look forward to being here in the district and helping, you know, work through a lot of these issues that are very hard, but um with the right community support and the right people who are willing to work together. I think that we could tackle them.
Thank you. Thank you. And now Karen Carr, your closing statement, please.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for the invite and being able to be here. I'm uh thankful to be able to see and uh at least see and put a face on um Kim, cause I haven't, I haven't met her yet. I didn't know who she was or anything. So I'm at least uh thankful to hear her views and um to know that there's uh capable hands uh that, we have a good group of candidates. So um as far as that goes, I uh, you know, definitely feel that I have uh the insights, the knowledge. Um, I have firsthand uh, uh, knowledge of um the bullying situations within the school. I have firsthand knowledge of the curriculum that I've seen within the district. Uh, I um have uh my uh kids, I know what my son is facing right now and has been facing throughout the last few years. I know our, I know our lack and how the majority of our students are behind because of COVID and we need to figure out how to meet them. Um, and bring them up to speed because they are, most of them are at least a year behind as far as their academic school, especially in the younger grades.
Thank you.
Stop.
Thank you. And that uh brings us to the end of our forum for this evening. I'd like to thank the candidates who joined us tonight, Karen Carr and Kim Williams. Thank you also to our community cosponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, the Summit Waller Community Association, the NAACP Tacoma Branch, Latinx Unidos of the South Sound, the Tacoma and Puyallup Valley Branches of the AAUW and the Tacoma Urban League.
Oh, got it. For viewers, please be sure to vote for the candidate of your choice before Election Day, August first. You should already have your ballots, so please mail or use a drop box to deliver your ballot as early as possible. Thank you also to our timekeeper, Terry Baker, and to Cynthia Stewart, our Zoom master, and to the committee who planned this forum. Be sure to read your voters pamphlet. Look up vote four one one dot org. Again, that's vote four one one dot org where you can find answers to, to questions posed to the candidates. Thank you for watching. Have a good evening and please don't forget to vote.